Good evening, welcome to the 11 July Select Board Meeting. Uh, we have a call, please call the order, roll call.
Uh, Joyce Capiello here.
Jim Sikosha here.
Who is President?
Dan Mantrek. Here that Rob gets and if not. Okay. Can I ask you to stand, pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, I I did my day in America. To the Republic of the United States. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Agenda review, we've had a couple of proposals for changes to the agenda. Under new business item D Delta. Yes, if we could move that up, we have an invited guest.
Send the land sale.
The invasive Japanese
Oh, okay.
Mediation.
Page two, please.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, page seven or nine for that part. And uh, it's been suggested that we not uh, discuss under old business, uh, A library damage bench.
You need a motion for that?
We could have motion.
I'd like to make a motion that under old business A, be put up for the next meeting.
Second.
Although favor.
Aye.
Favor, without objection. All right. Any other suggestions for changes? All right. Public comment. At the end of your agenda, you can see public comment, open the public. Public participation is limited, you wish to be heard, please note, two public comment sections. Meet, speak on items, speakers must be residents of the town of Barrington. Property owners who designated representatives of recognized civic organizations or business located in town of Barrington. They're addressed and permitted to speak by the chair. Speaker first need to recite their name and address for the record. Visitors should address their comments to the chair and the select board as a body, not the individual member. Each speaker will be provided a single opportunity for comment, limited to three minutes. Public comments should be limited to fifteen minutes. Not expect a response with commitment, not a two-way dialogue between the speaker and the select board or the town administrator. I will try to preserve strict order and decorum at all select board meetings. Seeing violent, disruptive, disorderly comments of those likely to induce violence, disruption, or disorder not permitted and will not be tolerated. Uh, if there are complaints regarding the town staff, those should be administered directly to the town administrator. Any questions? Anybody like to comment? To Russell.
Keep this under three minutes.
Thank you. Please have a seat.
Yeah, Robert Russell, ninety-nine, Tulane Road.
Okay, that was the second to uh,
Sure.
That we can, for those watching.
All right. Uh, so, um, thank you. So I reviewed, uh, since the last board meeting, um, I took some time to review the town personnel manual, the hundred and twenty-two page manual. That if I understand correctly, all town employees have to read, sign off, and abide by. I believe it's all full-time and even, uh, part-time rec employees, if you have a firefighter, a full-time police officer. I believe they're all held to this. I had asked the town clerk to get copies of the sign-off sheets for the five selectmen. And what I learned was the selectmen are not held to the town policies and procedures. Now, whether that's a good or a bad thing, I'm just stating that I believe that's factual, okay? Um, if I understand this correctly, the, the selectmen write this, they sign off on this. I mean, the foreword is written by the selectmen. As the leadership of the town, I find it odd that the selectmen would want the town employees to follow all these policies and procedures, but not abide by them. There's pretty important stuff in here. I mean, there's things like unwanted sexual advances, dishonesty, incompetence, neglect of duty. I'm not gonna, you know, I, I only have three minutes. I don't know why the selectmen wouldn't sign off on this. I'm gonna be introducing a warrant article in the spring that future selectmen, if it is passed, will have to sign off on this. Um, I think it is hypocritical. Um, the other thing in this manual is it does discuss how a citizen can file a citizen's complaint against a town employee. I know you just stated that complaints have to go to the town administrator. But it doesn't talk about how a citizen files a complaint against a selectman. So, I would like to know how I can file a complaint against Chairman of the Board, Danan Mantrek. Um, I am a citizen and I would like to file a citizen's complaint against Danan Mantrek. I'd like to know who will receive my complaint.
Or that, do a written report. Written.
I'm sorry?
Suppose you can do a written, uh,
I need to know who to give it to. Who will receive my complaint? It's, it's against you, sir. I wouldn't be just talking about it. You don't even know what it's about. So I'm, I'm asking, who will receive my complaint? I'm a citizen, I want to make a citizen's complaint against the Chairman of the Board.
We won't have a chance to, uh, we'll have to discuss that.
I need to know who to give it to.
Yes, I don't know the answer to that. I don't know that any of us know will decide.
So we, there is no current mechanism for that, is that correct?
I don't know. I don't think so.
Okay, when, when is a realistic time I could hear back?
Chairman, I'd like to make a note for three minutes.
Thank you, that's fine.
Will you reach out to me?
Yes, we usually do when you have a
Well, this is serious. I mean, I mean, I'm, I'm saying I wish to, I have a complaint. It's a serious complaint.
Once, once we determine who you're supposed to, we will respond to you.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's Monday, if I could hear back by Friday, is that realistic?
Yeah, can
I, I said we would get back to you when we reached this.
Well, you could get back to me in a year. I'm just trying to be reasonable. I'm saying I think Friday would be reasonable. We, we've had issues with emails. I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm talking respectfully here. I'm asking if
I don't have the answer for you.
Okay.
Major comment, thank you.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Any other public comments? Uh, please, your house.
Good evening, I'm Michael House from forty-eight Serenity Way. And my, uh, comment is, is more of, maybe a public service announcement, um, concerning budget. Uh, the, uh, inflation rate from two thousand twenty-one through two thousand twenty-two. The core rate is, is been four point three percent. The, uh, the CPI all index inflation rate has been eight point six percent. Food costs have gone up nine point two percent. And fuel inflation costs in the past year have risen forty-eight point seven percent. Now, looking at the town budget, at a minimum, we're looking at budget costs of at least five to ten, ten percent increasing over last year, by my estimate. Um, with a potential of anything dealing with fuel and energy costs of maybe even fifty percent this coming year. That, that would include heating, um, electricity and fuel costs for vehicles, um, for the, uh, road maintenance, fire department, and for the police department. Um, what I would like to do is I would like to urge the residents of Barrington to take out copies of their latest town report. And to look at the budget items and consider strongly where they think the cuts that we might be able to go and make would be. And whether or not they would go and accept increases on any of those particular line items listed in there. Um, if it would be acceptable for the, uh, the board, I'd like to have them going forward, any comments to the town administrator? Whether he could go and consolidate all of that for your consideration and passing it on to the Advisory Budget Committee. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There any other public comments? Those of you who are on, uh, teams, if you'll unmute yourself or raise your hand. When you're called upon, unmute yourself, those of you who are on the telephone, all of that, thank you, please.
Star six to unmute yourself.
Thank you. Recognize you at that point.
I see nothing electronically, Mr. Chair.
I see nothing else, all right. In that case, since I don't see any comments either online or by telephone, uh, we'll end the first public comment section. Public hearing, uh, school board liaison is here, Mr. Kerry Neal. Come join us, thank you.
Hello, everyone, Kerry Neal, Coachman Drive. I'm here representing the school board as the vice chair and also the liaison, uh, between our amazing boards. Hope you're all having a good summer and just wanted to open up by saying thank you so much for the opportunity to speak and also for Danan's, um, commitment to coming to our meetings and being a participant. We appreciate his updates, so thank you. Um, I have a few updates, um, to share with the, with the board and the community. Um, our extended school year program known as E S Y, which starts tomorrow. We're very excited to get into the swing of things and bring those students back into the school. We are also very grateful to be participating in the parade on the twenty-third and thank you for including us. So we'll have, um, all of our administration there and some of our school board members walking and meeting with the students and handing out some fun goodies to the kids in the community. So we're really excited about that. Um, and we'll be wearing our blue and yellow course. And the first day of student, for students is August thirty-first. And we've heard from some people, they're having trouble finding the approved school year calendar, so I just wanted to share that it is on the website. Um, so sau seventy-four dot org, under the menu, and then go to calendars, and then it's approved school day calendars. And it gives you the option for last year's and then this upcoming school years. Um, also, the teachers have been, um, in for summer professional development focusing on literacy, math, and classroom management. And we also wanted to invite the community to a barbecue held here at the E C L C on July twenty-first from eleven-thirty to one. And it's for everyone, not just those, uh, with students or potential students coming into the district. It's really for everyone in the community to come and meet, um, some of our new leadership team. And I have those names and their titles here, um, the B E S Principal, Rich Fordman, the B M S Principal, John Safina, the Director of Student Services, Raymond Pillsbury, and the Curriculum Coordinator, Sarah Rollins. So we have a very, um, exciting new group of people coming in and we really think it's important for everyone in the community to, to meet who's on that team. Um, and what they are planning for the year and how we're all coming together. And I think it will be a great opportunity.
Play for that again.
Oh, sure, that is July twenty-first from eleven-thirty to one. And it's a barbecue, so come hungry.
Here at the E C L C.
Yes, here at the E C L C. And there's no sign up or, or anything like that. It's just come as you are. Um, and I wanted to offer any opportunity for questions or if there's anything I can bring to the board.
Are you guys planning or are you guys have act computer training installed at the school?
So I'm not sure what the school is planning at this point and who would be involved in that. So I don't want to say something and not have it be accurate, but what I can do is get that information from our superintendent and then provide that to you at the next meeting.
That'd be awesome.
Absolutely.
Thank you for coming, I really enjoyed it. I'm not dismissing you, I just want to let you know I appreciate you coming.
Oh, thank you so much. This is great. I, I love that our two boards are speaking so much and hopefully we'll continue doing that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. There's no speaker. I can turn the fan off if you'd like. Okay.
Uh, invited guests will include, uh, Mr. Eaton, that's correct, I say your name, if I get the name right. He's going to talk to us about the knotweed remediation, uh, if you would, please.
Mark, you can come up with him. Thank you.
Mark can come too, sorry, didn't, didn't mean to keep you off.
Sure, as far as the protocol with the recording goes, we wouldn't make
Yeah, that's okay. If you just sit there and maybe I can push the camera back a little bit.
Okay.
Uh, Mark, maybe before handing it over to Mr. Eaton, if you'd give the board and the community, uh, how we got here and the importance of our conversation and hopefully potential work with Mr. Eaton.
Right. So, we have a little problem in this town that seems benign until you start looking at it and tracking it. Uh, we have an invasive species called Japanese knotweed, AKA bamboo. And it's really starting to get a hold on some of our roads, at least fifty percent of our roads have it to a substantial degree. I would say ninety-five percent of our roads have it, period. Uh, so, it's a tough thing to get on top of. We've stopped mowing it because when you start thrashing it around, it pollinates. Uh, when you try to cut it mechanically, it literally grows back the following day. We've even tried to rip it out by the roots, that don't work back within month. So, the only real remedy to this is chemical warfare, and I hate to use it in that term, but it's the only thing that's really probably going to work. The term chemical gets a little creepy, realize that, um, nothing to be taken lightly. But I have Paul Eaton here beside me who wants, uh, Keep It Native. Uh, it's his company that specializes in invasive species remediation. And I'm gonna have him try to talk you through the process and try to allay any fears that you have. Uh, Paul is fully licensed with the state to do this, uh, not a fly-by-nighter. Uh, would get any permits we'd need to do this, uh, especially the ones working near water, near aquatic environments. So, um, I didn't realize the severity of it until Paul kind of educated me on this stuff. Uh, we have to do something sooner rather than later, so I'll turn it over to Paul. Thank you, please, please.
Thank you, thank you, Mark, for that intro. So once again, my name is Paul Eaton. I am, uh, actually a resident of Stratford. Certainly. So I'll say that again. So my name is Paul Eaton. Um, I am the owner of Keep It Native LLC, invasive plant management. Um, I live close by, I live in Stratford, just a few miles from here. I, um, I, like Mark was saying, I specialize in invasive plant management and control. The, um, I grew up in New Hampshire, in the seacoast, I've lived in, I can have in Stratford counties all my life. And I've seen the proliferation of invasive plants. And that's what really motivated me to, um, do this work. So Japanese knotweed, um, so it is an invasive plant that is from Asia, was brought here in the late eighteen hundreds as a ornamental. Uh, it was brought here for horticultural purposes, um, and it, quote, air quotes, escaped, right? It, it started to be planted and it started to get out in the wild. So it's been spreading for all over a hundred years. Plant that without control really just, um, proliferates, um, out of control. And I, I just took a trip, and tell me if I have a time limit, but I do like to give, I like to give, um, perspective and, and, um, up educate folks on what the problem is. I just drove up through Pennsylvania, um, New York, and Connecticut, and Massachusetts, and Connecticut and Massachusetts in particular. You drive on their highways, it is just, covers miles of highways along the, the right-of-way. New Hampshire has a problem, it can still be controlled in New Hampshire. Uh, Barrington has Japanese knotweed, um, I, I believe it can still be fished here. Sooner you do it, the better. Um, the, it's, it's not a plant that can be pulled. It can't, it can be smothered in small patches. Um, but as, but to actually control the plant at scale, you really need to use herbicides. The herbicides that I use, um, are, have been tried and tested by the state, the state of New Hampshire, so I'm not reinventing the wheel. I'm actually using herbicides that are, um, have been, you know, used very effectively by the state, you know, trial and error for many years. The, my methods, um, no matter what type of work I'm doing, whether it's Japanese knotweed or many of the other invasives, is to use, the right amount of herbicide for the job, you know? And I take it very seriously, um, in terms of my responsibility to the environment. And I may sound a little contradictory using chemicals and being concerned about the environment. But the way I look at this is that, um, these invasive plants are, are pollution in, in our ecosystem. There's nothing here to control them. They were brought here, there's no pathogens, there's no insects that eat them like they do in their native habitat. They come here and, and they just proliferate. So the way my approach to this is to, um, is respond, you know, do it very responsibly, uh, with great care. Um, you know, take, take public input, make sure people are educated. I, I currently do work for a couple of other municipalities in, uh, in New Hampshire, uh, Northwood and Epping. Um, I do work conservation commissions, uh, for homeowners, business owners. Um, I have references if you need them. So that's quite a, quite a mouthful that I provided, but I really wanted to help to educate. Any questions for me based on what I've said thus far?
I got other chemicals, so I think one of the chemicals we got talked about Roundup, that's a chemical.
Yes, there's two of them, it's, uh, right.
I know there's, there's been a lot of concern about Roundup, Roundup from both environmental and safety, so
Correct. Yeah, I can speak, certainly. Right, I understand. Before I answer, oh, there we go. Right. So, so the active ingredient of Roundup is glyphosate, right? And that is certainly the, it's a lot of time and a lot of time in the press, right? Um, my, my belief is that, and based on, not just my personal belief, but based on my, my research, is that it can be used effectively and safely, it's used according to the label. And so as an applicator, you know, I'm really the person who probably would have the most at risk, right? In terms of using, um, any chemical, um, on a daily basis. So, you know, I make sure that I, so, so for myself, I make sure that I wear and exceed the required personal protective equipment. And as far as the environment goes, glyphosate, I'll just refer to that, right, because that's, that's what people really know it as. Um, it breaks down very quickly to the environment. It's a highly effective herbicide that, um, that, you know, method is to, to spray it on the leaf, like it gets pulled into the plant. Um, it stays in the plant, right, and then disrupts the plant's life cycle. Kills it. Anything that, of course, there's going to be some drips, right? You know, when, when you spray, right, you spray it to the point of where it's wet, but not where it's running off. But yet, yes, there will still be some, some drips that come off the leaves. When, when the, um, herbicide, um, hits the soil, it starts to break down immediately. And that's, that's really one of the benefits of glyphosate, is it does actually break down very quickly. And less than three months.
And I questioned from Mark, identified several patches in there, attempted to do this, but he also said it was in nineteen ninety-three. How many patches?
Well, it's, it's, there's a lot of big patches on places like, uh, Backtannen. Young roads got a significant stretch of it that goes on for hundreds of feet. Uh, Scuton's Pond Road has some. A lot of other roads have it in small patches right now, uh, but they're not gonna be small for long. Yeah, those, those are the major ones, but those are the ones that are gonna be those are the ones that are gonna be, well, choking off traffic for long.
And I think that's an important point, sorry to interrupt the conversation here, but the, the, the whole reason that we're here is obviously Mark and his department need to keep not only the roads, but the right-of-ways clear. Um, for safety, for winter maintenance, all the rest. And you see the roadside mower out there doing that, uh, valiantly through the growing season. Uh, but that's not an option, not a sustainable option for the knotweed. And so I hesitate to say, but really for most of these roads and the roads that Mark selected and worked with Mr. Eaton to select, doing nothing isn't an option. Because the knotweed continues to grow, encroaching the right-of-way and encroaching the road, which is a safety hazard and, and, you know, March's responsibility for all vegetation is to keep it clear. Make sure the drainage infrastructure is working as designed and everything like that, so.
And in addition to that, uh, I understand if you mow it, it actually spreads, it does.
Right. The, um, Yeah.
Two questions, have we, uh, I think goats eat the, the knotweed, is that an option? We get somebody out there with goats, because, I don't know, following up with my other question on top of that, is, yes, we've all heard about Roundup. Um, you know, what's gonna be the protocol if you go down Malago Road, because there's probably any between like twenty-five and thirty people that walk that road every day? You know, is it gonna have to be closed off for, you know, at a period of time, so a dog, you know, a dog doesn't get it on its paws, so on and so forth, right?
I could put signs out.
Yep.
Yeah, I could put, I could put, um, herbicide notification notices out, so that when people walk along, they can see the date and the time, um, that it was applied. Um, once the herbicide's dry, it really is, is not a threat to animals or people.
Yeah, well, I'm just thinking if we get a windy day and, you know, that's, that's a valid concern.
I have to watch the weather very carefully. I, I watch the weather continuously almost with, with this work. And I need to make sure that the conditions are, are just right. So it's, um, not, not raining and not going to rain, you know, within, within several hours. Um, I need to make sure that, you know, the humidity level is, is, is relatively low, so that the, um, so that the herbicide will dry quickly. I need to make sure that it's, that it's, um, not windy. I mean, a slight breeze is very nice because it actually helps it to dry quicker, it helps to settle. Um, but if it's very windy, I, I won't spray. Cause I, I have a, as a licensed pesticide applicator in the state of New Hampshire, and, and as a business owner, you know, my responsibility to the environment and my, my duty to myself, you know, to keep, to stay in business, right? Um, is to do my work correctly and, you know, um, really take that responsibility seriously. I think your, your questions are, are valid and they're important.
Well, we all have trust issues because of what we've seen with, with the product of Roundup and what they've highlighted in the news, so
Right.
Oh, it getting into water sources and so on and so forth.
That's right. Right, so, and also bear in mind that, um, all of this work is permitted, um, to the state. So, you know, as, as, um, as an applicator, as a licensed applicator, doing work along right-of-ways, I, I need, and also anywhere near surface water, um, within certain distances, I need to, I need to have this permitted. So I, I put together all the permitting material, submit it to the state, it goes through all the necessary scrutiny. And then, um, and then the town, you know, myself, get copies of those permits. Before I spray, I actually need to contact the state and let them know. When I work anytime with a permit, I have to notify the state, um, within two days and tell them when I'm going to be working and where. And they can come by at any time and inspect my work as I'm doing it. So.
And Bailey, a question, just a second.
My concern is
Mm-hmm.
I, I've heard everything you've said about spraying and washing it, and it's rising and they are what happens in the rain? Rains, the rain washes it and off, and if the rain, excuse me, does wash it off, it's gonna carry it down and it's going to go into a stream or it'll go into an ebb. Be underneath it or, if I be able to work it, that's, that's my concern.
Sure.
Like you, in your town, where we all have our separate systems, we all have our well water. Is that gonna do any damage to the ebb?
No, I don't, I, I feel very confident saying no, that it won't. The, uh, the herbicide is applied with a surfactant, it's actually otherwise known as a sticker. It, it helps the, uh, the herbicide to actually stay on the plant and to help dry and stay rain fast. So, once the herbicide is, is dry, it becomes rain fast, so water, rain will not wash it off. So, basically needs to stay on the leaf, it needs to be absorbed, you know, through the leaf. Um, and then it's translocated to the roots where it's really where the, the action happens.
Okay, my other question is, in the process, you are going to be do spray, is it a sprayer? Like to mix it in the sprayer, or is it already gonna come free, make sure it goes in there? Or what precautions do you take when you're telling the applicator, ready? We all spill. What I'm meaning is what happens if you spill a large portion? Caution to all if you have places that let that happen.
Right. Well, I have a spill kit, you know, that I keep in my truck. You know, I have a. So it's a good, very good question and and because actually the mixing process is probably the. That's the most. Let's see perilous. Part of the process, right? Use a clear word. And that is when I have to take. Extreme caution, right, to protect. I I have to take extreme caution, right? To protect myself and the environment. I do have a, if I was to spill a small amount and it reached the ground, you know, I have a I have. Material, you know, to absorb it. I have a bucket and a shovel to put it into. You know, I I will mix in the tank, right? The mix, the whole mixing process happens in the tank. It's it's a it's a period of time when I'm, like I said, I'm. Extremely cautious. I'm always cautious, but mixing, when you're working with a concentrate. Have to pay very close attention. I have to pay very close attention to what I'm doing. When I mix, you know, I. If I haven't used the entire container, that the top goes back on immediately, right? I I'm a very risk adverse person. Which may seem ironic, but.
That leads to my next question. If you have a. Better word of describing it like. That that spill from going up. It's just a question.
Sure. No, I sure I understand. No, I I mean, I mix directly into the, I have a a spray tank at the back of my my truck. With the hose, right? And and there's a hydraulic motor.
That was envisioning small.
No. Yeah, it's a hundred fifty gallon tank.
Are you left hand or right hand for?
I'm left.
But but real question is, you mentioned that you have worked with other municipalities and so on, and you go out and you put up signage. But did those other municipalities, did they notify the people that are, you know, almost affected if they're like on the same road? Did they notify them by mail or, you know?
I have a couple of different scenarios.
Tags on it or, you know, how how do you go about that? Because I'm just trying to look out for.
Of course. There there is a. I have a couple of different scenarios. I'm I'm not going to attach the scenarios to the name of the town.
Yeah.
But but one town does not notice, you know, meaning they did not notice their. Residents. The other town does notice. They send out letters to the abutters. Prior to the activity spraying. So.
I think we have a copy of something.
We have a draft that we've proposed. Certainly, our recommendation would be to directly notify the residents with the abutting property. You know, the select board could. Advise a different course, but we have a draft of the type of letter that we would send.
Right. It's a it's a draft that I that I created. That I thought would be a little selfless. It could certainly be modified. I actually prefer for a notification to happen because when I'm when I'm I'm working, I really want people to know what I'm doing, and I want them to know what I'm addressing.
You don't want them stopping go, hey, what are you doing? And hey, you're spraying.
Exactly. People rightfully so do. They're concerned. And I and I will, if I need to, I will stop my equipment and I will stop and talk to people, you know, to help educate them and to help alleviate their their concerns. Scotty Allen.
The fact sheet you provided said there's a different product called Rodeo that you use near water bodies. So I think you're going to be spraying near some bodies of.
Right. Rodeo is is approved for, believe it or not, use in water. There is, and I will not be applying anything in water.
So even if it's the roadway is next to a pond or, I think, at the end of Scruton Pond Road, it looks like a.
Right, right. That that.
Fire.
Correct. That spot requires required requires a watershed permit. So there are.
So does that mean something other than than Roundup?
No, it doesn't. I have three different ways I can I can apply the herbicide. You know, larger quantities, I'm working primarily. For this type of work, you know, almost entirely with my hydraulic pump, you know, that runs out of the back of my truck. For sensitive areas, I will stop that. I will put on my backpack. I have a backpack sprayer and put on a much, a very extremely directed quantity, right? If I feel like something is is. Extremely sensitive, I have a I have a stem injector. So you can actually inject individual stems. Of knotweed and it can actually apply the herbicide directly into the stem. Now, that is probably be. Possible, you know, cost prohibitive, it's not possible to do it on a large patch, you know, a very large infestation. But for very sensitive areas, we'll do that.
So the rodeo is used for in water?
Correct. Yeah, there's there's different formulations. There are two different types of permits. One of them is a right of way permit. That that would be the areas that do not have surface water. For areas that have twenty five feet, I have to submit a watershed permit. And that's when the state looks at it, you know, with with water in mind. They would have it very closely. And and it's still the same material, but they they're just looking at the water resources. Bailey?
What type of warranty? Well, guaranteed, take your choice of any.
I'm gonna start by saying you have to do it next year. You you will. And probably the year after, the year after. Want to be very transparent with you. This is a highly persistent invasive plant. So. And it does not like to go away easily. I will get at least eighty five percent of what I spray the first year will die. That's what I will guarantee. I will stand, I will back that. I do not have it in writing. I I will, if that's what you'd like. I I tend to get a much higher percentage, but kind of the industry average, you know, is around eighty five percent. Because you have very dense infestations. Sometimes they go up hills, right? So I have to weigh out. Getting herbicide on every last leaf versus the safety and and not overspraying. Right? When you get overeager, right, you tend to put out too much material, too much herbicide. Right? So if I'm assessing a spot, it's very thick and it's very hard to reach. I'm going to try to get ninety percent of it. I'm going to leave that last ten percent for next year. Because next year I'll be able to get into it much, much, much more safely for the environment and myself. You can read up, there's there's a lot of material available on Japanese knotweed. You know, I have I have places in both the towns that I worked in where. Sprayed it and I do not see a bit of it the next year, the following year. Two or three of them pop. Yeah. That's right. Yeah, they're known as rhizomes. They can go ten feet deep and they can go forty feet horizontally. They can go underneath pavement and pop up on the other side of the road. That's correct. Yeah, you're welcome. Scotty Allen.
So theoretically, you've got rid of everything in Barrington. How is it then going to in the future be? Are we at risk? Is this by birds or how does this come to us?
Primarily people move it and and material, gravel, dirt. You know, it gets moved from an infested site. So and sometimes it just starts as. One or two or three sprouts, right? That could be handled very easily if anybody knew. It was paying attention or they were familiar with the problem, but it it doesn't often happen. It gets ignored. Or it's it's green, so it blends in.
Will this take out poison ivy as well?
Yes.
I'm just thinking for our workers, you know, and if they're near a telephone pole or on the side of the road working, you know, so.
Yep, it it will. So that would be. So I would have to specify that in the permit. You know, if there's specific areas with poison ivy, it would just obviously be an increased scope.
Okay.
So, I mean, I'm I'm happy if it's in the permit. To hit, you know, to to treat poison ivy in a few limited spots, you know.
Well, if it's near the knotweed, you know what I mean? If you're like, oh, well, huge batch there, you know.
If it's the size of this table, no problem, right? If it's if it's a quarter of the size of this room, you know, that's a different.
Oh, yeah.
Scale. I'm just using. Okay, well, I understand that. But but if you're interested and you have specific spots. I would need to include that in the permit, which is really just a matter of listing poison ivy. So.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, there's one thing that we didn't talk about a lot, but it's in in the materials, so I want to make sure to draw your attention to it. As part of our due diligence and advance of bringing this to you and the community, Mr. Eaton actually reached out to Matthew Boziak, Boziak? From DES and he's responsible for the permit review and in for pesticide applicators. And he actually provided some really good information on the state level and surprisingly, but a very positive review of Mr. Eaton and the work that the state has done with Mr. Eaton to provide these services. And so I just wanted to make sure, you know, it's it's a difficult challenge for the town. And like I said, I'm of the opinion that doing nothing isn't an option. And, you know, certainly Mark and I have talked about it a lot, and this is something that we'd like to try to see if we can get it under control and not just ignore, you know, another problem and wait for it to get worse where we have more difficult decisions to make. On the financial component, I think I included it in my report. There's funds available budgeted in the paved roads budget line for exactly this type of work to maintain the roadway and right of way in the area of the paved roads. So we're happy to do more research and bring back more information if the select board has questions or if you feel like you're prepared to make a decision, we'd be happy with that as well.
If I may.
Sure.
Time is kind of of the essence on this thing because there's a certain period that you have to get this, but it's got to be before it gets winter killed.
Correct. Right, that's right. Yeah, before before first frost. Japanese knotweed is very sensitive to frost. As soon as it's frosted.
Mentioned September is the timeframe.
Yeah, end of September, early October is really ideal.
So if we needed to come back with additional information, we could do that at the first meeting in August. And I think there'd be enough time. If we made the decision in August, that would be enough lead time.
It would.
Is what I shared, yes.
I'd like to move on it, but also add in poison ivy just in case if he's buying something that. You know.
What do you think? We have a motion.
I could go with it. It's, I wish there was different technology, as I'm sure you do too.
Of course.
I'd all be happier.
Right.
So what would the motion look like?
I would like to approve the hiring of Mr. Wheaton or move or against the increase. And poison ivy.
May I? Fair. Specifically request that you name that as keep it native LLC? Yes.
Yes, that's what I meant to say.
With that post-processing, yeah, that's.
Thank you.
And we probably should have a number.
Not necessary. We're not here because of the number. It's under what the department heads and myself are able to spend. We felt like it was important to have a public conversation, invite Mr. Eaton to discuss it, and certainly allow the select board to talk. I'll let you finish your motion, and I have one last request for the select board's consideration.
That was my motion, sir.
All right. Can clean that up, tidy it up. Any? Objection or? All in favor? All in favor? All, all.
Only last thing, you obviously, you four members of the community, in addition to sending out the letter, I also provided a link, I think it was the town of Jackson. That provided a, you know, a good blurb on their website about Japanese knotweed. We would certainly make information available on our website, send these letters to the residents that are in the immediate vicinity. Can you think of other things that we can or should do in order to get the word out to the community so they know what Mr. Eaton's doing? And they understand that we've done our due diligence, it's permitted through the state. Just open for suggestions.
I would say do a Facebook video and put it on the, you know, have him aboard and say, hey, guys, this is what we're doing. This is the problem in town. And, you know, those people in those areas, you're going to be notified. And if you see me, you know, you know, stay a safe distance. I can come and talk to you, but. You know, this is what's going on. I mean.
Great suggestion.
The new age. And then I'd probably copy that link and go to the Barrington connections page.
I would like to see that if they have questions, they can either contact Mark or contact the select board office. So that Tiffany could be able to answer the questions then if it's.
I'd like the conservation board to be there and hopefully endorse this as well.
It's great.
Good idea. Any other concerns or questions? Mr. Eaton, thank you very much for coming in.
Mark, thank you.
Thank you for your thoughtful questions. No easy layups on Monday.
Proceed.
Thank you.
All right. While we're here, I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion.
All in favor? All right. Let's see, Mr. John to a fragment. Gail. Trustee of the trust fund, as our policy, one meeting, we discuss this, and then we will have voting at the next. Mr. Gail is here. If you have any questions with him.
I like what I read already.
I have no concern.
I have no concerns either.
Very good. All right, we will. Then move on to our, at our next meeting, we will then vote. And thank you for volunteering. Always. Much of much of what we do here depends on volunteers, so thank you. Stafford Board, MacGyver.
Great, thank you. Few items for you tonight. First, I'd like to call some attention to the July work anniversaries. These are employees who were hired in July. First, the Recreation Director Jessica Tennis has worked with the town for seventeen years now. She started working in summer camp and for camp programs or for recreation programs. And was hired on as the Assistant Director and now as a Recreation Director. Cares deeply for the town and does an absolutely fantastic job. Certainly thank her for her service. Seth Wentworth, similarly in the Fire Department, was hired thirteen years ago, and Eric Pike in the Fire Department was hired two years ago. So look forward to many more years of continued service for those employees. Next, I'd like to provide just a quick update on the new town hall. Anybody that drove by afternoon today, you'll see the flagpole was set. The Flagpole Company. Displayed the American flag and the New Hampshire state flag. We are acquiring a Barrington flag to go on the other stanchion of the. Of the flagpole. So that's great progress. We're still scheduled to move the offices starting the week of July twenty fifth. Anybody that's been involved in a construction project knows that this stage of a project, there's a million things that could go wrong and could result in a delay. Fortunately, the team at Carino and certainly all the subcontractors have been doing a fantastic job and everything has really been falling into place. I say that at a time where there's still no electricity to the building, not sure that the water's going to be running, there's no utilities yet, but there's a plan for all of them. And electricity's starting tomorrow. So.
Hope springs eternal.
Yeah, hopefully.
What was going on on the road today?
That's a great question. So related but separate, so not immediately related to the town hall. It's related to why we're not getting power until tomorrow. So the larger subdivision, it was two hundred and twelve acres, which was subdivided, a hundred and nine of that is conservation property. It was a conservation subdivision. And so that work required a Department of Transportation permit for the driveway for the curb cut where that signature drive meets Route one twenty five. So the role of the Department of Transportation is to evaluate what type of traffic that access will cause onto one twenty five. Most of the time, folks hire traffic engineers to do a study and make recommendations to the state, and then they negotiate essentially what needs to be done to make sure that it's a safe access point. So the end result for this larger. So the end result for this larger two hundred and twelve acre subdivision, of which there were sixty two lots, the town hall is one of them. The Department of Transportation is requiring a deceleration lane for the northbound traffic so that cars can safely get over, instead of being in the shoulder, they have a lane to decelerate in before they turn into the, on the signature drive. And for the southbound traffic, they require a center turn lane. So again, instead of cars decelerating in their travel lane, they get over into the left turn lanes, so cars can get around. That requires Route one twenty five to be widened, if you can do math, by two lanes. And so that, that, the first step of that project is moving the utility poles. So the, that is what was done two or three weeks ago. Obviously, the next step is moving all of the lines from the old poles to the new poles. Eventually, you'll see a lot more construction work happening on the roadway of Route one twenty five as that work's done. And we'll certainly work to get information out to residents when it happens. But it's not the town's project, but just so folks know, similar to what we've done with the two oh two bridge there. So anyways, yes, they're bringing the power over. They'll get it underground to the new town hall and all the rest. So again, the best source of information is barrington.nh.gov/townhall. It's where we'll provide updates. We've made every effort to help inform residents to kind of stay tuned that we're planning on the week of the twenty fifth, and you should expect service interruptions. Fortunately, there's a lot of services that can be provided online, so we encourage folks, if they can stay away from the town hall that week, might be best so they aren't disappointed if they're not able to secure the services that they're looking for. Certainly, if something does change and we need to change the move week, we'll also use all of those communication channels to help residents be aware. Happy to answer any other questions about the town hall? Awesome.
Very good.
Yes, sir.
Right now, we have a dumpster and some type of vehicle that changes all the time. What are we gonna, we gonna replant there or what is it?
Yeah, it's a great question. Very soon, you'll see that travel trailer removed. They just finished installing the rest of the drainage infrastructure, which is on the town hall side of that area. So the project superintendent's new office is going to be one of the meeting rooms for the remainder of the project. We won't know, we won't have a good plan of what to do in that area until Route one twenty five is widened. The, they will have to remove more of those trees along that frontage, the area that you're talking, in order to widen the road. Because the terrain slopes up some, they'll, they'll likely have to remove more than just enough to widen the road. I had a similar reaction when I was first thinking about it, although I, I think it's probably not a bad thing for, to have more of a sightline to the town hall for the northbound traffic. The southbound traffic has a good sightline. You can see the building. You know it's there. Obviously, we have regulations about how far the building has to be back from Route one twenty five. And the regulations also require some vegetation, but it doesn't have to be dense blocking vegetation. And so the, you know, the earlier on in the process, and I know, Mr. Bailey, you were part of it. Earlier on in the process, we decided to wait for the dust to settle before we decided what, if anything, what we would decide to cut along the frontage of one twenty five. So the shorter answer to your question is we'll wait and see how much goes with the widening of one twenty five and then make an informed decision then.
And along with that, will be decided?
The signs are in progress. So the sign that we have now, the green sign, will travel with us. And the gentleman by the, the business, it's Duff's Signs. He's done all of the signs in town. You know, they all have the same theme, the school and all the town buildings. So he's making a new one that's single sided for the entrance driveway. And then we'll have the one out on one twenty five, and we're installing a Town of Barrington town offices on, over the main entrance on the building as well. You're welcome. All good questions.
Any other questions about town hall?
Okay. Great. Yes, okay. This is really just a kudos to one of our hardworking town employees, to the Finance Administrator, Amy Doherty. When she came to town, one of the things that was really important to her that she had experience with from working at a bank and other organizations, something called positive pay. I knew nothing about this and not many others in town had, but she worked hard to implement it. It's not easy. It creates extra work. But essentially, it's an additional layer of protection against fraud and specifically check fraud. And in the last three weeks, she's stopped three separate fraud attempts on the Town of Barrington with positive pay. Essentially, what positive pay is, is we send the bank a list of the checks that we've issued and give them instructions to only cash those checks and none other. And so when somebody tries to cash a check that isn't on that list, that gets flagged and the town gets notified. In this case, the Finance Administrator, she reviews it and says, you know, yes, this is okay. No, it's not okay. And so this isn't uncommon. Fraud attempts aren't uncommon. Catching them is a great thing, and we will remain vigilant. But it's really come full circle for the Finance Administrator. So many kudos to her. Questions about that? Great. Also, I'm excited to share, back on the topic of the new town hall. This is a dedication plaque which was donated by former Select Board Chair Tracy Hardikoff for the building. She was involved in the project at the beginning stages, and she had reached out, and I know I'd shared with you that it was her desire to donate a plaque for the town, recognizes the hard work of all of the residents in supporting the project, those involved in the Select Board throughout the life of the project, the building committee, and recognizes the contribution from Congressman Pappas's office, the one point five million dollar grant. So wanted to show it off to you all.
Catch your pick.
And we'll be installing that at a, an appropriate location at the new town hall, yet to be determined. You're welcome to provide input if you want.
So you'll.
Thank you.
Official.
Ms. Hardikoff.
Absolutely. Yes, I, I plan to accompany that plaque with a small placard recognizing the contribution from Tracy, the donation to the town. And the still late summer, fall, we'll schedule a formal open house ribbon cutting type event for the new town hall. And I would expect that there'd be some recognition then as well. That's all that I have.
Thank you, Ms. Hardikoff. Scottle.
I have nothing additional to request. Thank you.
Very good. We're up to speed. Okay, on to old business. We've not doing a municipal parking. Down by.
So this is.
On one twenty five. There's a picture there, by the way.
Yeah, this is the map that the Select Board requested a more specific accounting of what we're proposing. And so Mark's here. If you have questions, he could very likely answer them, but I know we talked about it a lot last time. So the green is what's easy to clear, do pretty much on our own. There's one dead tree that will require a tree service. But if we wanted to, while the tree service is there, in that orange area, we could drop a few more pines just right in the parking lot, expand it a little bit more. And so looking for the Select Board's direction on that and authorization to proceed establishing that area more than it is.
I say we go ahead and do, do the green and the orange. Assume this other measurement sixty five feet.
Yes. Same way.
Be ninety five, basically a hundred feet back.
Yeah, so two hundred feet back from Route nine and sixty five feet wide, essentially the whole way through.
How many parking spaces is that? And then the additional thirty feet? How many additional?
That's a great question, and I'll defer to our intelligent road agent. We don't intend to put lines, you know, just kind of a free for all gravel parking lot, but he would be able to be, to more intelligently estimate number parking spaces.
So the question is, how many parking spaces are we going to get out of it?
Yeah, in each of those sections.
Well, there's a little, there's a little tongue of woods that come out through there that would really realistically have to be taken down in order to somewhere near square the whole thing up. Because right now, you've got a wide section out by the road, out by Elfmade, but then it just dives right in, the tree line ducks right in. Really, without taking down those trees and taking down a lot of the hanging trees on the one twenty five boundary line. That area out back is really not going to be of much use because it's hard to get a couple of three, four cars in there and then have to back out because you're backing out into trees. So I would say you could probably get. You could probably get probably forty cars in if we did it right. So basically, it's, and that's parking, basically head in parking on each boundary and allowing room to back out into a central alleyway.
It's about ten feet a parking space, one on the one twenty five side, one on the post office, Gail's side. That makes sense.
So I like not decreasing the buffer between one twenty five.
And, and there's, yeah, and.
So is that requiring trees to come down in that?
The only trees on that buffer on the one twenty five side is just ones that are really leaned over. Basically, they're rooted, looks to me on the property line. We'd be taking them just to keep them from hanging over the cars. So once we took that, that front row down, the rest of them are standing pretty straight. The majority of that buffer remains. It's not ours, anyway. The majority of that buffer is not ours.
Question, is this going to be a pair of all of them, snowmobile trail?
Technically, no.
It shouldn't.
That's good news for me. Question I was asking, I could give an answer.
I don't know if. I don't know if you, does that trail go right through that parking lot?
I think it actually goes in front.
Yeah, it, it shouldn't bother it. Shouldn't bother it.
If anything, give snowmobiles a place to park and patronize the businesses that come through.
Truck and trailer in there, you know? But I would like to make a motion to direct the Highway Department to make improvements to the parking area at the intersection of Route nine for the thirteen thousand square feet proposed parking of Routes nine and one twenty five.
Mr. Bailey, second? Okay. Got two fingers up. All in favor?
Aye.
So just, just, the state is still weighing in on that, so even though we have a curb cut there, doesn't mean we can just go ahead and do it. So they're still kicking the idea around if they want any more congestion in that intersection. I think we'll be all set. I think they'll finally approve it. They may make us do something stupid. I think ultimately we'll be, I mean, we have an argument that there's a curb cut there.
We're, we're working with our state partners to implement that.
Well, well, curb cut, but then, you know, the, the parking over, you know, where Elf made that now, you know what I mean? We, we need something down there for the residents.
Oh, yeah. Agreed.
It looked like it was already there, but, yeah.
Our state partners weren't aware when we initially went with, went to them to make sure they were involved in the process and could give input. They didn't even know that we had the lease there. So we're working through the, the, the history and the education, and we have a lease from nineteen sixty eight exclusively for the town for the purposes of public parking on that property. I'm sure we'll be able to come to terms and make sure that the access, if anything, the access from that gravel parking to Route nine is improved. Right now, you can see the degradation of the pavement on Route nine as cars come on and off there. Anything that we would do would only make that better protect the edge of pavement there.
Right. At the very least, we'd have to, have to dig out and pave that section quite a bit past that state drain that's there.
I'm in for keeping it gravel.
Yeah, but just the apron.
You'd have to put an apron inside into it, just to control the water around that basin.
Awesome. Thank you. Our marching orders.
Okay. All right. Attention bonuses. We have a. We've discussed this before. I think we want the public, especially our employees, to know that we're bitter. This, as Mr. House pointed out, earlier today night, there are still changes in the CPI and cost to our employees, and we've already committed five thousand dollars per employee as a bonus to the Police Department at our, at our last meeting. Do we know, I know that the study is about done. Do we have an idea when that will come?
I expect that we'll present the results of the wage market analysis that MRI is doing at the August eighth meeting. We may have some details to discuss at our strategic planning session, but certainly that's, you know, it's not a, we won't be having a Select Board agenda that night. So we'll do the, the full presentation at the August eighth meeting.
Is there any other discussion? I think.
So that's set in stone, right? The, the five thousand per, please?
We voted that, yeah. Did that at the last meeting, but the rest of the employees are not under quite the same contract arrangement. Right. And we didn't have the results of the particular study. That we'd already commissioned. I think, I think we have all agreed that we need to discuss this. But we want to get that.
If I could, Mr. Chair.
Please.
Yeah, so I just, you know, I think the, it's important, you know, in my role as town administrator supervisor, we've got fifty five, sixty full time employees, sixty five year round, you know, including part time, and up over a hundred through the summer months with recreation staff and all the rest. And the, I think this, the, these employees and the supervisors for these employees watch closely the decisions the Select Board make every year when it comes to wages, recruitment, retention, all the rest. And I think it's, it's important that the Select Board consider, you know, the decisions about retention and recruitment together and separate as appropriate. When it relates to the Police Department, the Select Board made the decision on the recruitment side to authorize a ten thousand dollar sign on bonus for certified officers. And that's a valuable recruitment tool for the Police Chief and myself to make sure that we can attract qualified and interested candidates for vacancies. Similarly, the year before, the Select Board authorized a three thousand dollar sign on bonus for firefighters. The, and so that's a good on the recruitment side. I think on the, you know, recruitment and retention side, the Select Board's conversation about reviewing wages and making sure that employees are compensated fairly and consistent with the market, especially given inflation and changes to CPI. The, so that helps us to retain our employees. It also helps us attract, attract employees when we can advertise competitive wages. The Select Board at their, at the June thirteenth meeting, made the decision on the retention side to provide five thousand dollar retention bonuses for the Police Department in recognition of the, their hard work and dedication to the town and continued service to the town. And so I want to be able to communicate to employees, not only in the Police Department, but in other departments, what the Select Board, you know, timeline plan is for consideration of if it's reviewing wages for all employees or reviewing retention bonuses for all employees. So I don't know what to tell them, and I'm, I'd be happy to send the message that you all have, but that's the conversation I was hoping to be kept saying.
Very well.
I would like to reiterate what I said in the last couple of meetings is that we, I considered town safety wide for all individuals in the town when I made my decision on this. We were in a, we're still in a, I admire all the towns around us are all buying the same and any new employees to bring into it. And I think that with us, if we're working together quickly, we're able to maintain a level of protection for the town. And that's the reason why I voted for it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We were able to maintain a level of protection for the town and that's the reason why I voted for it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted that town, the safety for the town to be reiterated.
And I think we all agree that.
Yeah, we do.
That, that is an important consideration and that we think our, we've probably agreed. I think we agree that we're going to have to increase some sort of compensation to all the employees because they're all essential to. Safety and continued function of our. I think question then will become how to do that, where that. How we should allocate additional resources. So we probably want to get some chatter going with the advisory budget commission. Probably wouldn't hurt to do that.
I think that once we get that report, uh, my recommendation, Mr. Chairman, with your approval is to. Ensure that they get a copy of it also at the same time we do, so it would help all of us to become knowledgeable and what we're saying.
And I think that would be public knowledge anyway.
Absolutely.
So we're not going to miss that, but uh. Then, then we have to kind of decide whether to do this as a bonuses of retention bonus across the board. Divide it up or do consider increasing wage.
I think there's probably a happy medium that we can reach out, whether it's a, a combo to bonus and or a, a bump in hourly. Um, you know, is, you know, and just try to figure out the best numbers for yin and yang. So, you know, where we're still trucking forward in a positive way.
And part of its timing, if, I mean arguably, we would have to do that at the next. Deliberative session.
Yeah.
In the next budget cycle or do we? Something more immediate.
Well, I think it's going to be uh pretty important, you know, while, while we present everything, so I'd like a little bit more time on it.
Any other comment? Question? All right, new business then. Uh, special town meeting. At a meeting, there is a, a. Two page or a front and back of the. Schedule for the special town meeting. On the seventh of July, we did receive a certified copy, there were a hundred and forty-two. Well, over fifty, if I should say. And if you have had a chance to look this over, proposals have the first session, the deliberative session at Barrington Middle School Gymnasium on twentieth of August. Uh, Saturday. Kind of our usual procedure for deliberative sessions. And the second session. Will involve actual voting be on the eighteenth of October. And because uh. You don't want to close down the school, schools are already scheduled to have three complete days off. From uh primaries, the November election and March election. Uh, that the voting session actually be held in the new town hall.
Do you live by law?
We can do that by law. The rest of the scheduling that you see there, the important dates uh relate, circulate around those. Uh, those dates and times proposed. Of the time we have to make the notifications, the times the supervisor, the checklist. Available registration and. Training of, the training of the people that work at the hall, et cetera.
Like to make a motion to adopt the special town meeting?
I have a question, excuse me.
Yep.
On the additional recommendations. Do you need to vote that money in or do we have ample money in the budget for the audio and the legal? These additional recommendation items, do we have enough money for that? Or do we have to make a motion to expand it, to expand it or to approach?
There's money available, uh, but we may have to move it around on the schedule and presumably we'll have to vote. To extend that money.
So we budgeted for the number of elections that we had, so the.
I understand that, I'm just talking about these.
Yeah, so.
Because we need to, what, what we, we're sitting here right now and talking about. Somebody to make a motion to expand it.
Yeah, so you don't need necessarily need to make a motion, but there needs to be an acknowledgement from the select board that certain election lines will be overspent. Because of unanticipated additional expenditures due to a third election.
I, I can live with that.
So. And to, to the select board chair's point, uh, you know, the, we have a seven point six million dollar budget. Uh, you all have heard me say, the department heads hear me say all the time, money's fungible. And so we can't spend more than that seven point six million dollars. And so when we overspend these lines, there will necessarily be lines that will need to be underspent in order to accommodate. Uh, and so I, I don't think that we need to request an emergency appropriation from the DRA. Um, in, in order to accommodate the expenditures, but an acknowledgement from the select board that there will be certain. Uh, budget lines that will be overspent so that when we review budgets, you know, heading into twenty twenty-three. What draws everybody's attention is any line that's overspent, hey, why is that overspent? Uh, you know, the department heads, we all do a great job spending within the budget that voters provide us. Uh, but it's at the end of the day, at the select board's budget, uh, and they expend uh up to that seven point six million, whatever was approved by voters.
Yes, sir. Mr. Bailey.
I know I asked, okay, I'm all of the. Consider the parking election staff offsite to ensure parking availability. Doing that, are we going to have to provide transportation or do we have enough vehicles to, to provide that? By that, I mean, we have to rent a vehicle so that we can show they get to and from the parking area or how we're going to do?
Yeah, side by side.
I would just, I would recommend allowing election staff to work out the logistical details.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
It probably won't involve great transportation issues for employees. There, there are potential there, there are four, there'll be forty-five parking places at the town hall itself. Used by voters. All right.
Make a motion to adopt the special town meeting schedule recommendations as presented. With acknowledging uh future expenditures for the um election.
I second.
Move in second, all those in favor?
All right.
Very good. All right. And speaking, we're talking financial, um. Everyone had a chance to look at second quarter financial analysis. Looks like we're doing pretty well.
Sure thing, so by now you uh all should be familiar with the fit and finish of the, these financial analyses. Um, at a very high level, the, the numbers in this uh report are, represent fifty percent through our budget year, which is also our calendar year. Uh, you can see we've spent forty percent of our budget, uh, which is on target. Uh, there are certain expenditures that we only have once a year, some come at the beginning of the year, some come at the end of the year. Uh, the page two of four, you'll see by department, a three-year history of expenditures and kind of how we track. Uh, so in the narrative, I provide some details of why certain expenditures in twenty twenty-two are abnormally higher than prior years. A big one is roadways and walkways. Well, we've done more paving so far by June thirtieth this year than we have in the two previous years. So we, we haven't spent any more money, we've just done the work sooner. Um, one that I'll call your attention to, the only one I'm really worried about uh is in general government buildings. Uh, as you can imagine, we did not budget and anticipate for the dramatic increase in heating and vehicle fuel. So those, both of those budgets are, I expect will be overspent by year's end. Uh, and I'm not concerned about being able to accommodate those over expenditures. Uh, we've certainly been doing what we can uh to keep those costs under control. But something that we'll have to look at in more detail during the twenty twenty-three budget development process. On the revenue side, so uh in my opinion, it's pointless to talk about budget and expenditures if you're not talking about revenue. We collect less than fifty percent of what it takes to run the town from property taxes. Uh, the, a very large portion of what we do is revenue that we collect locally and we also collect from state sources. And so, you know, during a budget development process, when we tell voters that we need seven point six million dollars. Less than half of that is coming from their property taxes and we need to keep close track of where that other half is coming from. So on the revenue side, we're fifty percent through the year and you'll look and see we've only collected thirty-seven percent of the taxes or the, the revenue that we anticipated. Um, and that would be cause for concern, except a large portion, twenty-two percent of the, oh, all of the revenue, the three point four million. That we collect in a year comes from state sources and that all comes in the fourth quarter. They pay it as late as they possibly can. And so we'll have that chunk missing from our revenue collections all year. Um, if you look the, the, on page four, the revenue trends are on target. The individual categories are meeting or exceeding what we would expect at this time. One last point, if you look at the last uh on the bar chart, figure four. Uh, the last column, you'll see total, the twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one numbers are pretty close and the twenty twenty-two numbers down uh thirty-seven percent. The reason for that, uh, the primary reason for that is the state revenue, the state sources of revenue increased by a pretty big chunk with the last state budget. And so a larger portion of our overall revenue comes from the state, which as I said earlier, comes in in the fourth quarter. Um, and so I don't have tremendous concerns uh with the revenue. Uh, the big ones were on target motor vehicle fees, that represents almost two million dollars. And we're right on target there, building permit fees were right at fifty percent. You'll see a spike in twenty twenty-one, that's after we changed the uh building permit fee prices after we had set the anticipated revenue. Um, so anyways, we are on track, I believe we're in a comfortable financial position, uh, and I'm happy to answer any questions. No actions required, thank you all.
Very good. Financial audit.
I hope everybody read the entire audit. Happy to answer. Happy to answer any questions. Uh, if you're like me, you read the executive summary from the auditor and starting two years ago. Um, the finance administrator has been preparing a, a review of the auditor's review. Uh, essentially anybody who's been in the position and um had their financials audited. Uh, there's a certain uh findings and recommendations and that's kind of the bread and butter of the actual audit. Uh, after you look past the numbers and so the, this is the second year with this auditor. Uh, and so they have started recommending some of the, the kind of high-level best practices. You know, you don't necessarily need to do, but they're going to push us to be the best that we can be, things like updating our policies every single year and things like that. Um, even if they don't need to be changed, reaffirming them. Uh, and so you have a, a report from the finance administrator uh of where we are with each one of those recommendations. Some have already been completed, some we will be working with the library trustees and the trustees, the trust fund. Uh, to implement the recommendations uh from the audit. Uh, overall, uh, uh favorable news from the auditor, Mr. Bailey.
On page six, I'll go to page six, in page six, let's see. Next to the last group we hear, the property tax is not collecting in sixty days. Per property tax of a hundred and four thousand change. And allowance for uncollectible taxes was only a hundred and ten thousand, how's that going to affect this?
That's a great question. Um, and to answer it, I'll draw your attention to the financial analysis under revenue on page four. You'll see that the first category is interest on delinquent taxes. And that, this number has been steadily declining. Um, at this same time in twenty twenty, we had collected over forty percent. In twenty twenty-one, it was just over thirty percent and here in twenty twenty-two, it's just over twenty percent. And um, I can't tell you why it's happening, but I can tell you that there are more people in the town of Barrington paying their property taxes and paying them on time than ever before. Um, it was, it started with COVID, um, our delinquency rate dropped to five percent. Eight has been average for Barrington, it's even lower now and that's a very positive thing. Um, the numbers that you're talking about, Mr. Bailey, and the numbers that are reflected on this revenue report. Uh, a consequence of people paying their property taxes on time is the town is collecting less interest on delinquent property taxes. Again, that's a good thing. As a town, we, we need to make up that mon, that money elsewhere. Um, the, you know, to, to compensate, but that is um. A, a trend that we don't know if it will continue, how long it will continue, but a positive trend nonetheless. And that's one of the reasons that the allowance for uncollectible taxes is um lower, hundred and ten thousand.
Last question, sir, page seven, fund balance. That fund balance, the fund balance beginning, fund balance ending, so right now we have uh ten million, five hundred fifty-five thousand. Seven hundred twenty-nine dollars in the fund balance.
An important distinction, that is in fund balance for all funds.
All funds, so that does not include.
What you're thinking about is the unassigned fund balance, which is one component of all fund balance. So that ten million number uh at the close of twenty twenty-one is what we had in all funds. That includes the recreation revolving fund, that includes the conservation fund, that includes ambulance revolving fund, it's all funds. If you look at the treasurer's report, um, we cash on hand, if you will, in the bank, our fund balance. Ranges from seven million to fourteen million uh at any given point during the year. That's driven by when property tax bills are due, uh, we collect, you know, twelve million dollars twice a year. And uh, we pay bills all year round. Every month we write a one point eight million dollar check to the school and, you know, um, so those expenditures happen every month. And the, so at this, at this snapshot in time, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, that was the balance of all the funds.
You made the breakout, I appreciate it, I understand that, thank you.
Okay.
But the, I understand it like I should, because I'm, thank you.
The most important, if you're going to pay attention to a number, the number I recommend you pay attention to is the unassigned fund balance. Which this audit does, there's nothing new, there's no new information in unassigned fund balance in this audit. Uh, but that's the number that you need to pay attention to. Uh, use responsibly and replenish responsibly uh for the safeguarding the town.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Issues? Ambulance bill, billing.
So this may not require much, uh, the chief's here, if you need to hear from him, we haven't raised our prices in six or seven years. Uh, he's recommending a fifteen percent increase across the board. Uh, that's consistent with neighboring communities and data uh we reviewed from our ambulance billing company. It's the select board's responsibility to set fees, uh, including the ambulance billing rates.
What was that fifteen percent increase?
You have a report in your packet, um, it depends on the type of care provided. And there's also a mileage component and it's fifteen percent across the board, uh, this, the, for. Yeah, basic life, life support, it's a ninety-eight dollar change. Um, advanced life, life support two, or no, specialty cares be the highest and that's a three hundred and nine dollar increase. There you go.
There's the day.
Sorry, chief.
It's also important to look at the commentary too. We need a motion to approve these or?
I'd like to make a motion. Prove an increase of fifteen percent for the ambulance billing.
Maybe the, approve the twenty twenty-two proposed ambulance billing rates uh as opposed to take effect as soon as possible? I thought so too, that's fantastic.
One second, first to that effect. Any discussions with that?
One second.
Thank you. All those in favor? We also need. We also need to talk about the policy about proposing that we somewhat change how we bill people. The packet that, here it comes.
So I think it'd be useful to let Chief Walker give you just a 90 second overview of the high level. I'll tell you what our goal is tonight, is simply to get you all thinking about these types of changes. The next step, if the select board's comfortable with what we're proposing, the next step would be for the chief and myself to work with town council to develop a proposed policy that accomplishes these goals. And that would come back before you, for more discussion, more conversation. It was the chief's idea and I thought it was a good one, to start with you, with just both points, with an idea, have a conversation so that he didn't spend his time and we didn't spend the town's money developing a policy, a draft policy if the select board didn't even like the direction that we were going. So I'll turn over to the chief.
So I, I can't even tell you when the select board approved the policy. It was well before a combined fire in the service. And the policy currently in place is that the select, the town will accept payment from the commercial insurers, Medicare, and send bills out for uninsured patrons, if you will. And, but there's no mechanism in place to collect them payments. The selectmen decided many years ago that because of the fact that the town supports the ambulance service through the taxes, that they didn't want to put an extra burden on the folks that use the service and may not have the financial means to, because they were short or uninsured. Important to understand that the way Medicare works, Medicare Medicaid, the federal insurance, the two federal insurance policies are that in order to participate in it and to collect that money, that we're entitled to the payment that they give, which is relatively small and supplemental insurance, but we absolutely cannot bill any patient for the balance. So Medicare would never change, that, that, that aspect of it would never change. But one of the things that is kind of, I'm, I'm not, I don't want to change the policy for in-town residents. I would certainly support leaving the policy the way that it is and the fact that we would accept payment for the service based on what the insurance pays and not, not chase taxpayers because they're paying for it through the taxes. But a little bit of a problem that I do have fundamentally is that the taxpayers have skin in this game and the non-residents don't have any skin in this game. So for me, that's a little bit troubling that if we pick up a non-resident in the ambulance and transport them, we have no real mechanism to try to get funds for the cost of the ambulance transport. And the other thing that's important for you folks to understand is when this policy was put in place, we were 100% volunteer and the idiots probably ran on 30 or 40,000 dollars or less a year to provide the services over the years it's gone up. But when you look at the amount of money that my budget, when I took over 22 years ago, my budget was about 65,000 and now it's just shy of 700,000. It's probably gonna go up next year. We, we put a lot of money into providing emergency services and there's, there's no ability to continue to do it for free. So this led me to believe that the right thing to do is to go after, send the collection or at least push a little harder to get money from off-town residents who use the service. The other, the other thing we went into is, is a couple of commercial insurers out there that will pay the patient for the transport, the ambulance transport. And what happens is sometimes that patient calls up and says, hey, I just got a check for X number of dollars from my insurance, but the ambulance transport, what do I do with it? And we explain to them that they should cash the check and write a check out and go to the town hall with it, with a copy of their bill and then we notify the billing. We, we receive payment. Some people take that money, collect it and never come pay the bill. And we have no, we have no ability to go after that. So out of frustration, a while ago, we reached out. The, the general feeling was years ago was is that you bill everybody or you bill nobody, you couldn't pick and choose. And in speaking with the legal counsel, the legal counsel believes that we can develop a policy and that we, that policy would be defendable to say that, look, we'll take what the insurance company and Medicare and stuff gives us with our town residents and we're not, we're not asking for anymore. But we do want, we do want the ability to go after non-residents to collect the money owed us for the services we provide them. And the attorney, in general terms, when we were talking, felt that was defendable. So I'm here to say that I think what makes sense is to, if you, you folks agree to it is we'll put policy together and then we'll send it to legal counsel to make sure it's defendable, because if it isn't defendable, then there's no sense in instituting it. And, you know, is it gonna make a huge difference in the amount of money the town collects in a year? Probably not, but for me, it's an ad infinitum that we, we should have some mechanism to collect what the town owes. And one of the things that I would think in that policy is, is that if a in-town resident has been paid by their insurance carrier for that service and they don't pay us, then we would send that to collection because then if that didn't give us the money that is owed for.
Grant? Question, how do you propose to handle individuals who don't pay? Do you plan on billing these individuals? Or what?
So what, we would do the same thing that we do now if people, you know, once in a while it comes across, the thing is that people pop up and say, hey, look, I don't have the means to pay this bill, we'll, we'll board the selectmen, write that off, we'll, we'll waive that fee. And I, I propose that that would be part of the process, that if they would, they would either request and write a grant, that they would request a waiver, need to show that there's financial hardship there and then that would come back to the board because ultimately at the end of the day, you folks are the only ones that can waive that type of a fee. So it would, it would ultimately come back to the board to make that decision.
What we've done in the past is had anybody who's applied for, whether it's in the tax office or the ambulance, any sort of financial hardship based abatement request, we've had them meet their welfare caseworker who's trained to review their financials and, you know, see if there's other services that we could provide to help them, provide a recommendation to the select board to the person with the financial hardship. And so we could formalize that component of it in the policy if it was in the select board.
Thomas, if you're not bill non-Medicare, people same, you have to bill the same.
Correct.
Even though Medicare will discount that, we still bill.
Correct.
So we'd have to.
Right. What we're looking at is, what I'm looking at, the policy I'm proposing is, is that if it's mechanism, if not, like currently do the policy, we'd kind of stay the same as that if people don't want the other sources to be in-town, we can face them, go after the people and not Medicare, because Medicare, it doesn't matter what the town and not Medicare, it's Medicare and you can take this.
Medicare stays for. The Senate built Medicare, says GOS 1251 and they gave us the $300 that they negotiated earlier. You still have to send that 1251 bill.
Correct.
To a person who doesn't.
Correct.
Doesn't have any insurance.
It's not right, but it is the way of.
But we can discount that, but we have to make it a conscious effort. So I think we have to be a little careful about making it across the board.
So we'll still send the bills?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we still, we send three bills right now. The, the difference is for everybody right now, we send you those three bills and then nothing happens. The, the proposal at a high level would be to continue sending the three bills to everybody. But if, if it's a non-resident, somebody that isn't contributing through their property taxes to the ambulance service, then we would take those uncollected ambulance bills and transfer it to collections.
If we try and throw those collections, there's collection, put a dig against their credit saying that they owe the town of Barrington X amount of dollars for services provided by the ambulance service?
I don't know all the details.
Yes, they would.
Would that happen that way?
Yeah.
I just, I didn't.
We would work very closely along with the legal, town legal attorney, you know, we, we have a very good working relationship with our ambulance billing company. So a lot of the question, a lot of the question that Dan is, is talking about with Medicare fraud and stuff like that, they certainly will work to make sure that we're not heading down a rabbit hole to get the town in trouble.
So I really like the sentiment for town, the majority of the accidents, you see, if I get the passes through. Thank you for bringing this to us, but something that it's just definite, John, it's non-resident and, and resident, because we're a vacation town and, you know, if cousin Mikey's up by the Ayers Lake boat launch and, you know, breaks his leg and, you know, he's just a cousin, you know, does that fall under, under that house? You know what I mean? How, how do we defer? So just something to think about between now and then of, you know, hey?
You know, typically we would treat it this, in my humble opinion, we would treat it the same way that you do with somebody that just moved to town and is trying to register a vehicle or whatever and they, there's certain benchmarks they have to meet the town clerk's office to build a reg of that vehicle. So in my mind, we would be looking at the same thing and those kind of questions, we would work with the ambulance billing company that probably already deals with this stuff. And it, it's, it's kind of important to understand that when something goes to collection, every single one of the collections company I've asked for five years, they get 33 and a third percent of whatever they collect. But it is what it is. I mean, if we're not getting it all and collecting a little bit of something weird, it could mean 33%, we're still getting a lot of it. But important thing to understand is industry wide, we're not gonna get rich off this. We may collect 20 to 25%, that it doesn't have a real high collection rate, but it's not about, for me, it's not about the collection rate, it's about, I, again, I 100% support the fact that our, our ambulance is gonna provide ambulance services to our residents, whether they, whether they have the need to pay for it or not. And I solidly stand behind that. I don't ever want somebody to not call on the ambulance because they can't afford it. And I've actually stood there with someone that really desperately needed an ambulance ride and said, I'm not gonna ride with you because I can't afford to pay this. And I've said to them, listen, I'll give you my promise that what's most important right now is to get you to the hospital in an ambulance, we'll deal with the rest of it when this is over, come see me. And, and sometimes I'm, I'm successful in, in convincing them that that's the right thing to do. And, and all my people know that, that they, they talk that this isn't about money, but it's just, I, I think it's important to tighten up a couple of small things. We're not gonna get rich off it. It's really about whether somebody gets paid by, gets paid by the insurance company and chooses not to pay us. We should have a mechanism to go after whoever it is. And the other piece of it is, is to, our attorney was optimistic that he was, I think that's defendable in court.
I think it'll help out, keep downing yourself because you tag, you get the job. You know, even if, you know, the debt collectors take their piece, it's still gonna help. So victory, small victory.
Chief, for tracking, so someone doesn't pay because there's a lawsuit, it was an accident or something, and those often take a couple of years for settlement.
So the billing company may, and you're correct, some of these takes four, five or six years. And the, typically what will happen is the lawyers will, will call us and say, we received a settlement, will you take X number of dollars on, will you take 50 cents on the dollar for payment? And typically I'll reply back, no, then I'm not in a position to do that. And inevitably they'll either turn around and come back and say, fine, what's, we'll pay the dollar for dollar, what's the bill? And you know, done, well, they got a copy of the bill sitting on their desk, but, and, and sometimes they do come back and say, look, the client didn't get the settlement we expected and will you? And at which point, if I say, look, I, I can't make that decision, I'll go to the board of selectmen and, and, and a lot of times it's been over the three-year time period and, and in the state of hands that we got, we can, we can go back after anything for three years, anything past three years, even if, even if somebody you could pay, we couldn't go after it. So a lot of these losses that you're talking about, typically they end up because of motor vehicle accidents, they'll call late, you know, or we'll just get a check in the mail.
Please, please proceed, Dan. Great. Thank you.
Where to come?
Blackboard members, it's Scott Yello. Can you tell us about Virginia or about?
No, that was not on my plan tonight. So planning board, what you really want to know about is we had our first meeting of the master plan updates, steering committee met. So this is the update on land use and transportation. So it was a general meeting. We had presentations from the Stratford Regional Planning Commission, just broad strokes about how we would approach this. We'll be doing some kind of survey of residents to see what they would like in town around transportation and land use. We have not gotten into any survey design at this point. One of the things we talked about is how we would alert residents to this survey. And again, we don't have a plan yet, just discussion.
What's ready?
We didn't get to that level of discussion yet. We're going to meet July 27th from 2 to 5, so we'll really dig into those kinds of things. So if you have a particular comment there that you want me to be aware of.
No, I don't know if they were involved because I know that. I'll see something.
And the town does make a financial contribution, albeit small, to Ready Rides each year through the budget provision.
Anything else?
Um, no, I don't think so. I did come back with a little elephant, but we lost a tusk.
Uh, Rec is, the summer camp is up and running and they're starting to focus on what's coming up in the fall for. Uh, Rec is, the summer camp is up and running and they're starting to focus on what's coming up in the fall for soccer, flag football and adult programs.
Mr. Bailey?
Thank you very much. I went to uh, library trustees. I would say that uh, they really had a good, strong meeting and uh, comments uh, that require uh, folks were sent to uh, Delph and to uh, administrator and. You know, I, I just answered the question, that's. Under the comment section, as, as people know, I've been here twenty plus years working with the town on different aspects of it. I have three items that I've been asking for. I guess I was the pop trying to get. I wonder if they have that. Bump in the road, the drain fixed down in front of the uh, fire station across the way from. Coming down the hills, golf course wide open. Somebody gets off the road and hits it. Way back one. And the other one I've uh, put out is that I've asked to have put on a consideration a program for women. That's, that's all I have.
To be clear, Mr. Bailey, the, the drains that you're talking about, that near the golf course and across the public safety, are those on state highways? Okay, you're talking about Route nine and then are you talking about?
Route nine, Route nine, it goes around the corner, so is it on? Like, I can't tell you if it's, it's the one that I know people have gone into it, maybe lost the tire or just bent the rim. The other one comes down off of uh, off the road, that's not a state highway because one twenty-six is down the bottom part. Pardon? Yeah, so it's up there, so it's about uh, as soon as you go up past the old uh, schoolhouse that used to be there. And it's across the street right and then that's all, you know, maybe a bullet or something like that there. So if somebody hits it, that would stop instead of going down.
Oh, yeah. Appreciate the comments.
Mr. Chief, but I had one further comment about the steering committee. We uh, we're looking for two citizen representatives on the steering committee. We got six. Uh, one person stopped responding, so we're taking all five citizens.
Go ahead.
So that was a really.
Um, Ms. Neal pretty much covered all the school board and their, their meeting is the day after our uh, planning session. So that'll be the next one. I think we probably will want to get the budget committee engaged here earlier than, rather than later. And uh, I think we're all right on the transfer station. Any other, any other comment? Okay, uh, it's time for the second public comment. Again, uh, each person has one chance to do this, three minutes, fifteen minutes? Anyone here? Anyone online if you, oh, sorry, Jack, Mr. Gale. Sorry.
Oh, wait, it was already there, Tiffany?
Yep.
Okay.
There you are.
Um, Jack Gale, seven ninety-eight Berry River Road. Uh, you discussed the issue, but I was wondering if you could furnish us, what is the estimated cost of a special election? The two-part process this summer and this fall? Could you be able to share that?
I don't know that we have a number yet.
There's nothing that exists right now. Um, I suspect the uh, you know, there, there will be various expenditures. Uh, maybe after the conclusion of the special meeting, that might be a good time to ask that question. I don't, I don't know that anybody has a, a good approximation.
Do we have a cost of an, of an average election on the same scale, which would be a March election?
I wouldn't be prepared to answer that right now. It's the, the budget, um, you know, a good, a good inclination in the budget. Each year there's various numbers of elections. Um, and so the election portion of the budget is, is separate, there's separate line items. So you can see in there, uh, election equipment, election wages. And so those fluctuate based on how many elections there are that year.
I will go look up the twenty-one elections, since there was only a single election there. And that would be representative for a ballpark number, probably.
That's probably your best source of information before it actually happens.
Thank you. And just to be honest here, several of you know this. I got inspired to start a new service to take what you put on the website and other groups put up in the state and other organizations that maybe doesn't get out. Because more and more people like to have stuff pushed to them instead of go to websites. So I started FYI Barrington. The inspiration for this was Mr. Rob Russell. We had a kind of rocky beginning on the first time we met. It was election day, it was past March, it was cold. We had to clear up an issue on electioneering. The rest of the day went fine, but I was quite impressed with how getting information out, presenting information changed people's minds. Regardless of how I felt about the information or the outcome of the votes on the zoning ordinances. The fact that we did have a service in town here that someone had started and that had gone away. I'm trying something new. So I know some of you I count as friends, but I was asking that question because I think people would want to know what this is going to cost. I'm no longer doing it just out of curiosity, but trying to provide information. It's a Facebook page and there's no comments. Because the one thing I know that for sure will happen, if I just put up select board meeting at the time and place and here's the link to the agenda, I can always find five people to complain about it. I just want to let them know that they're here, that you're here.
Thank you very much. Anyone else comment? Mr. Booker coming from.
There'd be some tricentennial news.
It's not tricentennial. Um, I'm speaking to you as a fire chief. I'm a little, I'm a little disheartened with the decision you folks made last week. There's, as town minister alluded, there's a number of other employees in this town. And you're, if you, you folks made the decision about one small group of employees. And the problem is, is that what that does unfortunately is it leaves a bad taste in the rest of employees' mouths. And I for one have to go back and look at my people tomorrow and say, they did, they didn't decide to do anything for you people. So what you've created here is you've created a rift between employees. That's not good. And a number of years ago, one department found money within their budget to give pay raises. And the board of selection approved that. And none of the other departments got that. And that created quite a problem that took a number of years to go away. So um, I wouldn't want to be the one sitting here trying to figure out how you're going to fix the problem made. But I suggest that the five of you really need to do, need to figure that out. Because you gave a small group of employees, and don't get me wrong, I fully support them people and I love them to death. And this isn't about them. But it's, it's about the other employees that need to be taken care of too.
Mr. Mara?
Not to beat a subject to death, but I kind of want to piggyback on the back of what Rick just said. There's all kinds of heroes in the town. Some of them wearing blue uniforms, some of them wear fire hats. Some of them drive plow trucks. Last January, there was a certain ice storm. There was four hours of absolute hell out here. And a lot of people never even knew it because it got taken care of so well by my people that it just seemed like a day at the beach. Let me tell you, my people had to make every state road in this town passable before we could even do our own stuff. It was a monumental effort. I had guys that were doing ten, Dean, close to twenty miles backwards, salting as they went because they couldn't drive forward and stay in the road. They got it done. They were absolutely magnificent and I'm unbelievably proud of what they did. In the meanwhile, state trucks are going off the road, they rolled one on one twenty-six, they were all over the place. Okay? Every place else was an absolute mess. Our town was as safe as it could have possibly been at that point in time, especially given the obstacles we had to overcome. So, you know, we want to talk about bonuses being tied to the safety of the town. If my guys weren't heroes that day, nobody in this town would have gone anywhere for a long time. I'm exceptionally proud of them and I just wish I could come back with some news to them that were going to make them feel appreciated. Thank you.
Further comments? Those of you who are online, if you'll raise your hand, be recognized and then take yourself off muting. For those of you who are by telephone, star six, we will recognize you. Not seeing anything on the.
Nor am I, Mr. Chair.
All right. Include the public comment section. I would entertain a motion to go into non-public session for personnel.
Personnel.
I like to make that. Make a motion to, to non-public. Thank you.
Purposes of personnel, yep.
Yeah, for purposes of personnel.
Personnel.
All in favor? All right. Dave, thank you very much. Dave, thank you very much.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, welcome back to public session of the Barrington Select Board meeting of July 11. Motion to adjourn? Yeah.
Motion to do adjourn.
Don't we have to say we not sealed the motion?
Not sealing the minutes is not doing it is enough.
Not doing, okay.
Motion to do adjourn.
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
That objection is in order.